Hi Eric, are you there?
So this is you. And then I can do this once more. Okay.
Hello, this is Sue Underhill. From Light Hill.
We are not muted. So I'll mute us. Hi Karen. Karen, you're still muted.
Hi John.
Hi Karen, we're connected.
We're connected. Yep. How's everything?
It's nice and cool in the house, I'm staying in, it's too hot out.
It's really hot out, yes.
I've gotta go pick tomatoes, they're all red on the vine, but I'll wait till after the meeting.
Ooh yum.
They're all coming at once.
They always do.
Yeah.
Are you making anything special?
No, just I bring them in and give them a lot to the neighbors and make tomato sandwiches, stuff like that.
Yep. Yep.
I know Eric is on.
Eric?
I think he's muted, but he's connected.
Okay.
Yep, I'm on, I gotta step away for one second though, I'll be right back.
Okay.
Hi Bob.
Hi John, how are you?
You good?
Hello Bob.
Hi Karen, how are you?
Lance.
Hi Amanda. Hi Lance.
Hello board, how are you guys doing?
Yep.
My name's...
Hi Amanda.
Can you hear us in there?
Hello everyone.
Hey Chuck.
Hey Chuck.
Some unfamiliar people.
I'm Sue Underhill from Light Hill.
Wow hello Sue, we've conversed and it's so nice to see you in person.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening, good evening, thanks for being with us. We should get to you rather quickly, it won't take too long, just have to go through some perfunctory stuff.
Thank you.
Boilerplate. There's the agenda folks, if you wanna see where we, where you fall.
Number one.
Sounds like Karen, sounds like Lance. We got Bob.
Yep.
Amanda.
Is Ryan coming?
Uh, he's there.
Oh okay.
Gary. Okay. We got all the usual customers here. Give it one more minute. I'm using a monitor tonight along with my laptop, so if I keep looking to the left, I'm looking at the monitor 'cause my old eyes are having trouble with the laptop.
I'm doing exactly the same.
Me too, I have my husband's and he's got like three different screens, so.
Yeah, works out great.
Yeah.
Your eyes aren't as old as mine though. No glasses Karen, you don't have to wear glasses.
No, but these screens are wonderful.
Yeah, they are. Okay, I got six o'clock, if you would put the flag up for us, Eric will salute it. Okay, very good, let everybody join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You folks have tuned in to the August 11th planning board meeting of the town of Canadegwa. I will take a roll call first. I'm looking for Karen Blasey.
Here.
Brian Stachak.
I am present, hello everybody.
Hi Ron.
Gary Umms.
Here.
Bob Lacourse. Amanda Van Laket.
Here.
And we are also joined by our recording secretary, John Rubatella. Our representative from the MRB group Lance Brabant. And our town planner Eric Cooper. Who is at the controls. We gave Chris Nadler the night off. And let me go through real quick the procedure here for our virtual meetings. We, we go through each application and we start out with the applicant making a presentation as to what they're proposing. And then the board has a chance to follow up with questions and comments and the applicant responds. And then I will open it up to anybody in the audience who would like to address the issues. And if there is no one, we'll move back to the applicant. And if there's no further comments from the applicant, we will call for a vote and take it under consideration as far as the resolutions in front of us. And we do ask that if you intend to speak, please state your name, your address. And you can use the, put your hand up device that's on our Zoom meetings, that's the way to get our attention, at least get Eric's attention. And then we'll take a vote and that'll be, that'll be how we'll proceed. First I want to call out there to anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments or address the board on something that is not, is not on the agenda. We call this the privilege of the floor. And now is your privilege, so anyone who wants to speak, put your hand up and give us your name and address. Okay, so it appears everyone's here for the applications before us. And if that being the case, we'll move on to the first one. Which is the Canadegwa Comfort Center located at 5160 Parrish Street Extension. They are seeking a single-stage site plan approval to add additional parking for an existing special use. And I know Kevin Alvany has been sort of assisting Comfort Care or Lighthouse with this application. And also I know Suzanne is here representing the Comfort Care. So Kevin, are you there, do you wanna sort of take the ball? And maybe Kevin is not. He's showing as a participant, but he...
There, I'm unmuted now, alright.
Good evening.
Sorry about that, good evening, yes. Sorry that my face isn't showing on the screen, I was trying to get home to my laptop and I couldn't get out of the office in time, I gotta get a camera here, so I apologize. But I do wanna just pass it over to Sue first, she can give you the kind of big picture need for the parking area. And then I can just kind of talk through kind of what we came up with in terms of the sketch plan and the approach.
The purpose of wanting to expand our parking area is because our home at times we have two terminal residents at a time. And sometimes those residents have large families. So we found in the past that when that is the case, we don't have enough parking up at the top of the home in our driveway area. And people do park along the driveway. And for the most part, that's okay, but for some of the older folks trying to get up and down the driveway, that's not as easy for them to navigate when there's cars along the driveway. The other reason that I'd like to have this area where it is is because in the winter our driveway is challenging. And so if we could have some extra spaces at the bottom of the hill, people that have difficulty making the hill will have a place to park. And then those of us with four-wheel drive that are used to the driveway can go up and down to them up and take them up to the house. Or we can park down there if it's harder for people to be able to walk up the driveway. And so we just have found that there is a need for this. We also do training of our volunteers in end-of-life care so that they can assist me with the care for our two residents. And so when we hold training classes in the basement of the home for my volunteers, again, the driveway is quite full of cars. So this would really help to resolve those issues and concerns.
I wanna say that I, just before, that I've been up there several times for several of your terminal people and you definitely need some new parking, I mean some additional parking. That would be a big plus for the place and I certainly am supportive of your wonderful work.
Thank you Karen.
Thanks Karen.
Okay Kevin, do you want to brief us on how it's all gonna be done?
Sure. And I do wanna say, you know, this place holds a special heart, place in my heart also. My dad was, spent his last days there and it was a tremendous asset to the community. So part of my reasoning for being involved in this, on this side of the equation, which is typically I'm on the review side, is I just find this place to be a huge community asset. And it's whatever we can do to kind of work with them to help get, keep this place going because it provides such a value to the community. So when Sue brought this up to me, you know, they did a great job of reaching out to good excavator operator and contractor and figuring out exactly where they were looking to place the parking area. It makes the most sense, I think, in this location based on the slopes and everything else. So we, basically I worked with them on a sketch drawing to kind of showcase where this would be on the, on the lot and it scaled out properly. And then what we're looking at is, alright, how do we deal with the water quality impacts from the increased impervious cover from this area? One, we wanted to make sure it wasn't gonna impact the neighboring property to the north. So we, what we're doing, and then we also wanted to provide water quality treatment as well. And then, you know, during the construction process, make sure the area is protected. So this design that we have here provides what I think to be for all that. And in addition, I'll be definitely during the construction process readily available and out there to assist the contractor in Light Hill with the project. The approach is to put the parking area where it is. It's gonna be about a two-day construction project based on our meetings with the contractor. And what we're looking at is, looking at the lay of the land, utilizing a small berm, again, maybe six inches at most in height, probably less than that, just to make sure the water doesn't short-circuit towards the landowner to the north. Have it sheet flow through this, this area of vegetation and then come down to a rain garden. And we're getting a generous donation of good quality bioretention soil from Finger Lakes Soil and Mulch that we'll be using in the rain garden. And then Sue has provided the list of plantings and wayside. Did a great job of coming up with a good selection of plants and a drawing of how to allocate those within the rain garden area. And then there was also a call during the PRC meeting for some privacy screening of the the parking area, more so for the public, so they're not seeing the enhanced parking there. So they came up with a list of plants in that screened area that we're showing right by the silt fence. So when the silt fence comes out, after the project is done and the area stabilized, we'll have an area ready to go for the plantings in that proximity. And what we're looking at is evergreens, and I'm trying to remember Sue, which ones wayside actually selected what they thought was best there. To make sure it doesn't block the great view from the top of the driveway as they mature. It's a tremendous asset to have that view, that coming view at the top. And what they're trying to do is make sure, okay, we can block the view from the roadway of, and screen that parking area from the community view perspective on the road. So it's a nice balance that way. So that's the approach, to try to provide that screening, provide the water quality treatment. And we provided a cross-section design out of the DEC Stormwater Manual for the rain garden itself and approaching it that way.
Okay. I know the plans sort of came in piecemeal. Hopefully everyone from the board saw everything that's involved with this application, including the original plan, the plan showing the evergreens. And then Sue provided today a plan of the plantings that'll be involved with the rain garden. So hopefully everyone got that, saw that, understands that, and I'll open it up to the board for any questions. Okay, I'll kick it off. Is the intent to have the spaces lined, marked, defined so to speak? Or is it just gonna be sort of a Wild West out there, people come in and park? Are you gonna, roughly I guess there'll be what, nine by eighteen each space? Okay.
Nine by eighteen is the plan. So there'd be about nine parking spaces, somewhere between nine and ten. I, you know, I thought about having them marked, but then I also thought about the fact that in our homes, in our driveway, we don't have parking spaces marked. And this really is a home. It is to feel warm and inviting to people. But you know, that is, that is an option that we could consider if you feel that that's really needed.
I don't think there's a requirement that has to be marked, it's just, just a question I had. Are there, is there ability for people that are visiting that may be handicapped to park? Obviously they park up near the building and do you dedicate a space up there for someone who may be visiting that needs a handicap parking?
Yes, we actually do have a sign right on the end of the house, upper reserve parking for...
Okay, well, that being said then, I really, it's your discretion as to whether you want to to mark out those spaces unless somebody else in the board has any reason to feel that should be done.
I think Brian had a question.
Yeah Ryan.
Yeah, thanks Chuck. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any issues with painting the lines, or I should say not painting the lines. I think this is a really nice plan Suzie, and you know, you, we really are thankful that everything you do provides for the community. Really excited to see the rain garden, I think that that's really nice Kevin. And if, the only thing that I could think of from a safety point for your, the people visiting your home are snow plowing in the, in the wintertime, so maybe if Kevin could just, you know, touch on like where might snow plowing and have you guys planned for that? And is that, that's my only main concern is for the safety of your, of your residents and visitors is really the snow plowing aspect.
Ryan, I can probably address that, I have a contractor that does snow plowing. And it really seemed reasonable to me that the snow plower could maybe push snow to the north and to the west on this. We wouldn't really wanna push it too much to do with this as a rain garden. But there's enough room between the berm and the parking area itself that it wouldn't disrupt the berm. And so we should be, we should go right there to the north.
Great, thanks, it sounds like you thought through it and it just, it's, it seems very reasonable. I'm in support of moving forward, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board? Alright, just a couple of housekeeping items. The Ag Advisory Committee looked at this application, they had no issues with it. There was no need to send it to the county planning board, so we got no response from them. We sent it to Chris Jensen, he had no comments, as did, Jim Fletcher did not have any comments. MRB did not have any, you didn't review this, did you Lance?
Yeah, we provided...
Oh that's right, you did.
I think it was dated August 6th.
5th, yeah.
Um, it was, excuse me, it was minor in nature. We just asked for a detail of the rain garden to be provided, a detail of the silt fence to be provided and just some clarification on the material of the parking area and the construction staging area, just to be identified to make sure that we weren't gonna be blocking the driveway for emergency purposes. All of which had been responded to by Kevin Alvany email and then a revised plan indicating that this information has been provided. And at this point, I'm satisfied, I don't have any conditional concerns or questions.
Okay, Eric, there were two waiver requests in with the application. One was through the professionally-prepared plan, which was no problem. The other one was, did they ask for a waiver on the size of the spaces? Is that, is that, that waiver you're showing now?
Right.
Okay, so there are two waiver requests as part of this, this application. Okay, just wanna make sure we got them both. Just want to make sure we got them both.
What's the size waiver? What do we, what's the regulations say? And what are they, what's the difference?
What I was told was that regulation was twenty.
Ten by twenty?
Eighteen, twenty by ten.
Oh, okay. And it's going to be eighteen by ten. Got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
And looking ahead, Gary, it looks like eventually we will be going to eighteen by nine foot spaces at some point. So-
Yeah.
But still, it's ten by twenty currently, so the waiver request is appropriate. Other than that, I'm ready to move on. So, if you want to put up the, do you have anything else to say, Sue or Kevin, before we move on to taking action?
Well, I just want to say that I really appreciate the guidance because this is all foreign to me. And having your comments and feedback and then being able to act on those and have time to do that was very much appreciated. And I just, I appreciate that you could fit us in tonight for this review. And I really appreciate Kevin's help.
I had to comment before we, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Jesse on the line with us says that they would like to make a comment if that is appropriate.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, I apologize. I couldn't find the raise hand function, which I use Teams more than Zoom, so sorry. My name's Jesse. This is my husband, Dave Wible. We live next door at 5154 Parrish Street Extension. And, yeah, we would just like to make a few comments and have a couple of questions if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you. So, I want to start and say that both my husband and I have had family members pass away in hospice care. No one at the home next door, but we have a lot of, you know, respect. My family was involved with Cuba Comfort Care at Penney for many years. So, you know, really respect and appreciate the hospice scenario or, you know, the care that's provided. With that said, we, upon seeing these plans vehemently oppose this, I feel that it will have, we feel that it will have significant negative impact on our property. We, when previous changes were made to the driveway, we've experienced a lot of runoff, flooding in our backyard. When the pool was filled, drainage used to drain off the back of the hill towards, what would that be, like northwest?
Five and twenty.
Well, yeah, like up off the back. The drainage now points directly at our home. The trees, which are on the hospice home's property, but are in the separator properties, have been, have died due to too much water.
Change in drainage.
Yeah, change in drainage. Our neighbors who aren't able to attend tonight, part of their pool is kind of being eroded, the uphill side of the pool, if you will. You know, so some concerns. That parking lot will be placed pretty much directly below our master bedroom window. There's already, that hedgerow is not well-maintained. There's trees that could fall on our home that are dead and have not been taken down. The plowing in the winter, there's no spring cleanup. So, when the rains come, it just, all the gravel washes along the side of five and twenty and into our lawn. When the previous driveway changes were made, an immense amount of lighting was installed. We've installed blackout curtains and blinds in our master bedroom, and there's still a tremendous amount of light pollution that was never there. So, I have a concern if there's going to be additional lighting added. What else, Dave?
Well, I guess their concern is that it is a two-bedroom facility, which, you know, we can respect by regulations. So, what we're asking is if there's ten additional cars here, like what's, what's the max capacity of the building? And what are the future intentions as we, you would like to increase the parking? So, we understand that, you know, the site was a beautiful site and it did have some limitations. But now, you know, moving past your limitations, it's affecting us.
I'm, I'm sorry that, that that is, seems to be the case for you.
Sue, make sure you address your comments to us. Okay, just, yeah, if you could respond to any of the concerns that Jesse brought up, I'd be appreciative to us.
Sure. So, I, I appreciate hearing that. And for the board, we did, there was a water problem. It was a very wet year when we were doing construction. And we did change the drainage once I was aware that there was a problem for our neighbors down the hill. We put French drains in again behind the house going off to the north. We put a rain garden in on the front of the house with all of our roof water channeled through one section and then going through the rain garden down an additional tier and then dissipating into the lawn. So, we did try to address those areas. Also, with the planning of this parking area, that was a big concern for me to not create a water problem for our neighbors. And that's why we have proposed putting in the berm and the rain garden down there to help dissipate that flow of the water as well. As far as the trees and the hedgerow, I would very much like to take those down. But I had approached our neighbors a couple of years ago when we had a tree surgeon at the house who wanted to take some of those trees that looked iffy down. And at that point, they were not interested. So, I'm hoping that we can move forward with this. We do have seven lights along our driveway. It is not a huge amount of lights and they do have blackout pads on the top. There is definitely lighting from across the road as well from the Cheshire Glen. And I'm not proposing to put any more lighting because I feel that there is enough light for their parking area. Their parking area may not even be used in this. It is for the times that we have a busy time with families, when we do have training. So, there may be many times when that area is not even parked in. Or maybe I would park down there so that another family member can use the driveway up at the top of the hill. But our house capacity, you know, it is not, it is not full and overflowing. It is a home. And there might be three or four family members visiting each of our residents at a time. And sometimes they have family gatherings, like a Thanksgiving dinner or a special occasion to celebrate an anniversary. So, there is not a tremendous amount of coming and going with high volume at Light Hill. But people do come and go as they need to. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Gary. Yeah. From a zoning perspective, is this property just a commercial residence? Is it a, is it a business? Is it a mixed use? How do we, what do we consider this? And, does that have any implications as to the amount of parking that can be made available at this property?
It has a special use permit. I can't remember the exact classification of what it is, but they received a special use permit back in 2014? I mean, 2014, I think, the site plan to revise the parking. I think maybe it was 2010. I don't have it right in front of me. But it has a special use permit to operate this. As far as the required amount of parking, I believe they had the required amount. And then, we don't have any rules as far as putting in more than the required amount. That's allowed if the applicant wants to do that.
As the, Eric, has the property been inspected? I think with a special use permit, there's inspections that occur to make sure it's in compliance with the S U P. And that's done by Chris, right?
It's usually the zoning inspector. But essentially, the town doesn't have great records of who has a special use permit. It was probably last inspected in 2014.
And I'm sorry, Jess, you're on the north side of the property, I assume? Like, just looking at the plant, could you put the area up again, Eric?
I thought we were east, but-
Oh, well, heading toward five and twenty, right?
Yes, correct.
Yep. And our property continues on behind there as well.
We have, on the wooded lot.
Yeah, we own that lot as well.
Well, the, what's before the board tonight is a, an amendment of the special use permit to allow for the parking. I mean, some of the issues you brought up are not something that we're really willing and able to discuss tonight because we, it's the first time you brought to our attention. But we certainly want to make sure that what's proposed would not create any issues for you folks or the traveling public on Parrish Street Extension. Sue, would there be parking down there at night? Would cars be parking, pulling out with their lights on and backing out onto the driveway? Or is, for the most part, this just going to be used in daylight hours?
I, I honestly can't tell you that. I would think that mostly it will be used in daytime hours. But if we, again, have two large families and somebody is eminently dying and the parking up at the top is not even needed and somebody-
So, there, there are cases where the loved ones could come, park, and stay all night possibly if, if the, okay.
Yeah. Would the berm help with that lights though? Right? If there's going to be a berm there and people are, maybe that berm would help to-
Well, yeah, maybe just a comment on that. We were, the berm height is really only six inches in height. That's something that could be augmented. Quite honestly, Sue, you know, if that were, you know, you look at, we could augment the height of that, that berm to use it as a blocking of the, any headlights.
And, and I would oppose to that. And maybe we could even do some plantings on the berm or something.
Yeah, yep.
Kevin, what about some seedlings, you know, bare-root seedlings? To see if they would succeed there? You know, like just small seedlings, like we allowed on a project over on County Road 10? Do you guys remember? Like, maybe that might be another option to, you know, a really cost-effective measure to kind of help in that situation? I don't know.
Well, I think-
You could look at-
Go ahead, Kevin.
Go ahead. I was going to say, you know, we could look at that, but, you know, if we're looking for an immediate, or, you know, close to immediate kind of benefit for the, for the neighbor, it would be, you know, maybe it's a combination of increasing the height of that berm with some plantings on there also to provide that screening. And I, you know, it's, again, the wintertime when it's the darkest time of year. So, we probably would need to use some sort of evergreen to provide that, that screening.
I, I think we could probably continue to just use the blue spruce and bring that around.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Just wrap that, this planting out parallel to Parrish around and up. And maybe, I think if you go about halfway up the parking area, you would probably block off the, any lights that would be shining toward Jesse's house. Does it sound like a plan?
Yeah. Well, could we, could we make the blue spruce though seedling size and not require? I guess my concerns are the success rate of spruces there. And just to kind of facilitate success of the plantings. If we would, instead of, you know, six-foot-tall spruces, I mean, of course, it's up to the applicant. But if we could, if we could increase the number of spruces, you know, low-growing spruces, Kevin, do you hear, do you know what I'm saying? Like, if they could be pruned or something, you know, that we don't want to take it-
Yeah, I do. I think, you know, when we looked at the, in our investigation, you know, I hate to bring up Switchback Trail, but that, that aspect of that four to six feet in height was kind of a, a nice success rate for planting that, that type of evergreen in that area. It seemed to, you know, you go taller than that, they're not going to be that as successful in terms of mortality rate. So, that, that range, and I think, go ahead Chuck.
And if you go shorter than that, you don't get the buffer.
Right, yes. I mean, you could look at the three-foot range with a berm, you know, and then, then you're getting to, automatically, you're getting close to a, probably a five-foot height that way. You know, so we could look at a range of somewhere in that, that elevation.
So, I'm going to raise my hand real quick.
Sure.
I, I kind of see, you know, the trend of where you guys are headed with this. But I don't see a ton of maintenance going on as far as the whole property is concerned. And where my concern grows is that as you're, you're adding stuff, you're moving soil, you don't have mature plantings that are in good shape now to retain your soil on your hill as well as adding new plants, which will likely wash away with the amount of rainfalls we've been having infrequently. So, the new plantings probably won't take hold and your old plantings are going out.
So, you're worried about washout, you're saying?
I'm saying washout here. Because we're experiencing washout from the driveway and that area, which has been reseeded due to a sewer line, which was installed in that graph right there in the current picture we're looking at. So, a lot of that material has come down the hill into our driveway and down the road as well. So, in a good rainfall, the, the westbound lane fills with gravel from this stuff. And I have to go out with a power room and sweep it off. You can ask the town highway because they've seen me out there.
Yeah, but is that all associated with Light Hill? Or is that, that's just gutter flow that's running down? You said something about material coming off five and twenty?
No, towards five and twenty.
Towards five and twenty.
Isn't Light Hill paved? Isn't that road, isn't there driveway paved?
It's the grassy area where like the driveway ends that, like, it's not really grassy. There's a lot of gravel that washes out there, particularly in the spring after plowing.
Yeah. So, if I can comment on that, I was looking at that out on, on the site. There's a long flow path that comes down Parrish Street Extension. And there's a culvert about probably sixty, seventy feet south of the driveway for Light Hill. And then, there's no other catch basin or anything else until it gets past your driveway. So, I think that could be a request maybe to the town highway department to look at a intervening catch basin to be able to take the road runoff that erodes the road. There's, you can see the road is actually washing out a little bit just past the, and then look at, you know, being able to handle that flow in that, that general area. Because there is a lot of road runoff that's coming down into that area. And it's really got nowhere to go.
You know, similar condition too on the back.
Kevin, do the driveway culverts for either driveway have any effect on tapping out there? Are they proper size? Are they cleaned out?
Well, that's the thing. There is no driveway, there's no, there's a culvert that goes a long span and there's no opening between the two driveways.
Oh.
So, you have Light Hill's driveway and then you have the, the neighbor to the north's driveway. And there's actually no, there's no opening to get that water into the culvert.
Okay.
So, that, it daylights past the driveway.
Gotcha.
So, that, you know, that could be something-
Jim could look at Fletcher.
Yeah. Eric, can we formalize that as a request to Jim Fletcher to take a look at that?
Sure. But is that like some sort of condition of approval on this application? Or is that just separate?
No.
I don't think so.
Nope. It's something related to the condition of Parrish Road. Nope, it's something related to the condition of Parish Road Parish Street Extension.
So if I could, I mean, I'd like, I'm ready to make a motion on this. It seems like
Yep.
Maybe we could just revert back to the original then if the neighbors are, you know, if the if the issues we discussed are not going to make a difference to the neighbors, I would just make a recommendation. I would like to move that CPN 20-048 single stage site plan approval for 5160 Parish Street Extension. Seeker resolution as a type two action and also the site plan approval resolution with six conditions, Lance, I believe, because we had to add two waivers, is that correct?
Can we make the waiver to find?
I had to add the waiver for the parking space.
Are those waivers conditions or findings?
So we've done it both ways. I threw them on here as conditions because we've done it that way before. I typically have put them in the findings to acknowledge that the board granted the waiver. Whatever way you guys see fit, I think are appropriate.
Yeah, I think we typically grant the waiver as part of the approval. So I would I would leave, yeah, I would include the other waiver and as well as the the waiver shown.
All right. And I guess, do we do we need condition five? I guess the updated plan that's been submitted and we reviewed tonight includes the phosphorus notes. Correct. Okay, so maybe I would revise my motion to include only five conditions then? With number five being a waiver of the second requested waiver.
With the parking space size.
Size waiver.
Yes.
Does the applicant or should it be conditioned on a soil erosion surety estimate? Being that it is relatively small, the construction will take only a couple of days. It's going to be kind of in and out and to hold them up over a surety might not be necessary.
Further revise my motion to only include four conditions?
I will second that.
So let me just make sure, this is a revision of the special use permit. A site plan for the special use permit. So the landscaping that the applicant is proposing tonight regarding the evergreens and the plantings in the rain garden. If for any reason that landscaping would not make it, would fail under this resolution, under this condition as part of the special use permit, would the applicant be required to replace those demised plantings?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I wouldn't want to do that because I want.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second regarding the seeker type two as well as the site plan revision. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, opposed?
I do not oppose, I support, I support, we got.
Okay, Jesse, and I'm sorry, I didn't get the the fellow's name.
Dave, sorry.
Dave, okay. Yeah, thanks for joining us. I I think first of all, you certainly, it was a surprise to us that you you've had some issues out there. I would hope that Light Hill would work with you if there's some cleaning up to be done, that you can agree as to how that's to be done. Maybe Eric, it'd be appropriate to have a inspection conducted under the special use permit to make sure they're in compliance with the original permit. So maybe if you could schedule that with code enforcement, that would probably be appreciated. And other than that, again, thanks for, thanks for your input.
Appreciate that, I'm truly.
Okay, moving on. Sue.
Kevin, thank you.
Jesse, Dave, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next application is a single stage site plan, a request from Grove Engineering representative representing Linda Dolak, owner property at 4487 Middle Cheshire Road. And they want to build a new family dwelling on a vacant parcel. Mr. Grove, someone representing Mr. Grove or Ms. Dolak, are you in the house?
John, John Salisbury's house, I believe he's muted right now. Let me see if I can unmute. Uh. Hold on.
Eric, you should have a sign that says unmute.
No, I know he can hear me, he's actually in the town hall, just down the hall, I just got to figure out how he.
Ah, invite him into your room. Put your mask on now. So Bob, you had some questions on this one, so.
Yeah, I did.
You ready?
Did try to ask. Yep.
Okay.
I mean, I'll let those guys explain it, but then I'll ask it.
Sure. Just don't, just don't want to miss you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? This is John Salisbury, can you hear me please?
Yes.
Okay, my name is John Salisbury and I'm possibly, well, the prospective owner. My wife and I have submitted a a purchase offer to Linda Dolak and she has accepted it. And our purchase is addition though upon site plan approval. The property is located at 4487 Middle Cheshire Road. It's kind of at the top of the hill. I guess we don't have the photo up there yet, but the site plans have been developed in conjunction with in conjunction with my wife and myself. It's a, it's about footage of 1,800 square feet. It's a, it's a flag lot, a true flag lot, because the property actually extends out to Middle Cheshire Road. I have a very, very skinny strip that goes out the middle Cheshire Road. Cheshire Road that is contained within a 66 foot right of way that serves for parcels. The other four, the other three parcels are are developed with single family homes. There is also a single family home just north of where we posed to put our single family residence. There is a pasture lot to the west, which is to the left hand side of the screen, which is about probably about 10 acres. And north and and to the right of the single family structure is farmland. It is active farmland. We do understand it is there. We have grown up around farms, so the owners and activities of farms are not going to be disturbing to us. The we had the septic system evaluated, we did a test hole, a deep test hole and two percolation tests. And it's going to require a shallow trench septic system. So I completed the design up and will be submitting to the Canada River Watershed Inspector. It was a fairly good test, the soil isn't, it's actually reasonably good, but apparently the rules are very strict. And we want to have the proper system. We have included additional leach line area in the event that we do an expansion on this house. No expansion is proposed at this time. We are also proposing to put a pool on the property. One of the particular reasons for for us moving is that my wife needs a swimming pool and we cannot put one in our backyard in the town of Brighton where we live now. There's be able to get heavy equipment between the two houses on each side of us. So I think Bill's done a really good design here. We we do have water and electric service. Water service would be provided by the town. It's at the very, very north of the property, about 300 feet from right, right from that point. It comes down 300 feet to the south to the lot and then up to the house. It's going to be about 500 feet of water. The water department has suggested a one and a half inch water service and that is what we will install. They have also questioned the feed to the swimming pool and that will be a manual feed to the swimming pool. We do not propose to have an automatic feed. I prefer a manual feed in particular because it makes you look at the pool and make sure everything is good water quality wise. Included in the development is a small frog pond. My wife and I, actually in Brighton, we attracted ducks as well as pit bulls as well as other wildlife, particularly birds. We will also have a two car garage of around 600 square feet. And that is a requirement, is an actual requirement of our, of our deed of the restrictive covenants on the property. One of the other restrictive covenants is actually an imposition on our neighbors. It's a deed restriction on our neighbors to the south that provides for a view. It's a view shed easement shown at the very bottom there that projects through Mr. Young's property. It actually projects to the the property to the south of him. Originally, this was one big parcel owned by the Cleveland's. And they established four lots to be served by the by the roadway, which is actually a paved driveway at this point. And then to the south was property that Mr. Mr. Cleveland retained for some years. It has since been sold and is is currently developed. And the neighbors are respecting this 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 view shed, so they do know that it is there. We're excited to come out to Canada River. My wife lived in Ionia growing up. I lived in a rural area outside of Albany as well as in Hadra, which was, which had a lot of farmland as well. My family has property down on out in Middlesex on top of Italy Hill. So we're really looking forward to being able to live out in the country at this point.
Okay.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, Chuck, I had my questions, I'll ask Eric and John there. John, welcome to the neighborhood. I live in this area also. It's a great little place to live. But my question really is to Eric, and I asked him earlier, what denotes the front of the house versus the side of the house? Because I look at your front of your house and I see your setback is less than a front setback in AR2. And so I'm really questioning Eric, should that be 60 feet? Or why did it, does it denote it as a side versus a front? Setback.
That's kind of a good question. I I do know that our neighbor across the street has a a pretty similar setback. I don't know exactly what it is, but his setback on that side as well, directly across the street from us to the south, he has about a similar setback to ours. Yeah, you can see it on the real photo there.
Yeah.
So so front setback is drawn from the street line, which because this is a flag lot, is Middle Cheshire Road. So that's where the 60 foot front setback would be drawn from. The front of the building is like if you were to draw a line essentially from here and pull it back parallel to the
Yeah.
To the street line, whatever you got, I'm trying to say.
I'm following you.
Yeah, the closest point to where it touches the building, that would be the front building line. And everything in between the street and that front building line, well, that would be the front yard. The front setback is the required setback, 60 feet within the front yard. I think that this might be wrong, at least what he has noted here, because I think he shows a front setback right there, which isn't right. Um, it should be 25 because it's where the side setback is essentially is where it hits other lot lines in that it's not the rear line. So these should be 25 feet.
Right, so the way the house is set, is it okay now with in zoning for the setbacks? And my question really is, then Eric?
Yeah.
Okay. Fine, so that was difficult to find in the code, that's why I wanted to have part of record that the front of the house is the most closest part toward the the road, not a private road. And the next question John I had was, your your site plan doesn't show your drainage off your roof. I assume you're going to go into a single and then drain it out to out someplace or, oh, yeah, I see a rain barrel there.
Yeah, Bill's, Bill's went to your manual for stormwater design and he said it was a he, we were required to have 1,200 gallons of of storage. So he's proposing six 100 gallon rain barrels. That is probably going to have to be double that actually, because I can't find 100 gallon rain barrels commercially. Other options we're, you know, we're still looking at would be diverting some of that water to the, from the splash blocks to the pond. And and letting it fill up the pond again. Originally, we had proposed to put a liner in the bottom of the pond. We're not proposing to based upon the soils. We think it'll be okay to to hold some water. We don't really need it to be deep. We're not looking for, you know, fish and that kind of thing. We're just looking for, you know, kind of a seasonal pond that wildlife will will come to. And we think there's actually a need for it there. There's, there's not a lot of open water that I can see in the area.
Yeah.
Remind me, but I.
Yeah, no, no one's going to see your place from the road, that's for sure. That's my only questions I had and welcome to the neighborhood, thanks.
All right, thank you, Robert.
Anybody else on the board?
I should raise maybe a concern that the Conservation Board raised a concern about the the number of trees we would be taking down with the to build the property, to build the property out. In working with Bill, we have, we have since moved the pole further to the west and have reduced the area that needs to be removed in the wooded area by about 40%. It's down to now 3,300 square feet of area that would be where the trees would be removed. There's a total of 149,000 square feet of of wooded area. So I don't see that as significant myself and I'd ask the board to view it that way too.
Yeah, you certainly have a lot of trees as you go east. That is all wooded back there, yeah. Uh, yeah, I know, I know the ECB, John, I know the ECB had mentioned the possibility of moving the house to the west to get out of the woods a little bit. When I was out there, if you moved a little to the west, I think your your view down the lake would be improved quite a bit. Because I think, I don't know where your deck is, I assume that'll be your your vantage point as far as sitting out there and looking, looking south. But can you see the lake from that deck where it's located?
Well, there is a minor obstruction on the Osborne's property, so you know, we're doing as much as we can to keep our our view shed open. And and moving the property more to the west, there's the obstruction of that building on that other property that would impede it. The the Osborne's have a raised bed area, which you can see.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, and that is, that is pretty heavily planted, he's got a couple of trees in there and whatnot. So you can almost see the view shed on by the triangle on the on the left of the bottom. It shows that pretty well. That's basically what the view shed area is. If we move the house further to the west, we will not be able to see the, we will not have guaranteed view shed to the south, to the, to see the lake. And and that's really, you know, one of the, one of the real. And that's really, you know, one of the real significant aspects of this parcel that attracted us to it.
Oh, yeah, that makes it primo. Does, do you have a view shed restriction on your property for the people to the north at all, or you do not?
Actually, there is no view shed restriction because that property was not included in the original subdivision by the Cleveland's. That property was owned by someone else at that time. And so that property does not have any type of a view shed easement over my property.
Okay. Is your property subject to any other restrictions, easements? I know you've got the access.
A variety of utility easements that are adjacent to the roadway and are within the 66-foot right-of-way. That 66-foot right-of-way is, you know, it has the usual utility easements within it.
Speaking of easements, Eric, you want to go back to the site plan? Yeah, take it up to the northwestern corner up there where the water line connects. It looks like your water service goes on to the neighbor's property. Do you have, or do you need to acquire an easement north of the curb stop there to make that tap?
No, there's actually an easement that runs across there that is a water line easement that is dedicated to the town. So the town is allowed to tap the main and to run the curb stop to my property line.
Okay.
That is, this young who is south of me, that is what he also did.
Okay, I see the water easement labeled. It shows the northern edge of the easement, but it doesn't show the southern edge unless it's your property line, okay.
We believe it's superimposed on the property line. The easement is a considerable research. And the property line is defined as the, it was actually owned by the Wyfels. It was, and I don't know if I pronounce that right.
That's right, that's right.
That is where their property was, and that is exactly the easement is written, as being the northern property line of their property.
And the 10-foot utility easement that's on your property, is that a electric easement? What utility is it? In that same corner?
Oh, that's for RG&E and it's for registered town. And I don't think there was a provision for spectrum, but we would all sign it if they'd be willing to bring.
Okay, well, yeah, I see the transformer, okay. Well, okay, they should have labeled it with utility.
Yeah, we're at a considerable site to develop due to the distance that the water line is from the house, as well as the electric. We're gonna have to pay for RG&E to set a transformer on our property, which means they're gonna run primary power to that transformer, and then we will run it into our house. Mr. Young had to do the same thing. If you look at the site plan, south of the house that we're looking to build and to the west of the temporary stabilized construction, no, there's a transformer there. That is actually his transformer.
Okay.
He had to purchase that and pay for RG&E to install it. We're gonna have to do the same thing, the services.
And John, I'm sure you did your due diligence on your responsibilities for that common driveway in the 66-foot easement. I guess you somehow, I guess, the property owner share in the maintenance of it. I was talking to your neighbor this afternoon across the easement, and he said there was no formal agreement per se.
Well, it is actually buried in the abstract that Lisa Dolak provided to me. And it does say that we are supposed to meet and discuss the driveway maintenance to be performed. And that by a three-quarter vote, it will be decided. And then an assessment will be charged to each of us for one quarter of the cost of the work to be performed. So there is formal documentation of it. I'm aware of it, and I have had my attorney review it, and he says if I'm okay with it, he's okay with it.
Nice to meet you. This is Bruce Young, I own the property to the south.
Yeah, Bruce, okay.
Great, yeah, no, I told, yeah, Chuck, I told you today there was a formal agreement, so.
Oh, was there? Oh, okay.
There is a covenant.
You're on my bad ear side.
Okay, no, that's fine. There is a formal agreement. We do have incur plowing costs that we will assess for every year. And if there's significant maintenance, we'll get together as a group and decide what we're gonna do about that.
Hey, thank you for that correction. Anybody else on the board? I've been monopolizing the discussion here.
I don't have any comments, I was.
Okay. All right, just looking at the SOP stuff here, the county planning board did not have to, or did not make a recommendation. The ag advisory committee had no issues with it. There was an ag data statement submitted with the application. John had told us that Tyler had done an initial review of the, I guess, the perk test. And even though the design, Bill didn't design it yet, I guess it's in the works as far as designing the shallow trench system. Chris Jensen had no comments. We mentioned the ECB was concerned about the 100 trees and the wildlife habitat. And I think, John, you said that the pool would be relocated to reduce the amount of encroachment in the forest. Jim Fletcher? Okay, that's confirmed. Jim Fletcher had the question about the size of the lateral, the service lateral, as well as the auto feed. Cheshire Fire Company had no response. The fire hydrant location, that's, they'd set out at the driveway at Middle Cheshire. I saw one at Johnson in Middle Cheshire. Is there one near the driveway?
There's one right at the corner of the driveway. I don't know why it didn't get picked up with the survey map. There is actually another one, which is 300 feet north of where we proposed to put the house and out in the middle of the farm field out there. It's about probably 300 feet east of the house and about 300 feet, I'm sorry, 300 feet east of the house and about 500 feet north of the house, out in the middle of the farm. I walked out there just to verify it was there.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's for the deer. That's for the wildlife.
It might be irrigation for the farmer, I don't know.
Okay, and Lance did not comment on this, but I know you had brought up PRC, Lance, about meeting the two-year storm design as far as any stormwater control, and I assume that Bill has done that.
Yeah, for the, I mean, yeah, with the rain barrels being proposed, then that provides the water quality and storage of it. I do have, for the board's consideration, that comment just to make sure that they're still conditioned on providing something in case something changes between now and then. But that's for the board to consider. The other question I have, and I know we brought it up a period, see, and I cannot find it on the revised plans, is the location of the neighbor's water service. I think it's Mr. Young, who I believe is on the phone tonight. I was looking to have his water service location added just to make sure that we weren't interrupting it or impacting it as part of the improvements associated with this project.
We could certainly do that. I'll get together with Mr. Young. I believe, according to the town, that there's a tracer wire on his water service. So we should be able to locate that relatively easily and avoid hitting.
Sure, do you know, is it on, what is the, I'm gonna say the south side of the private drive? Or is it on your side of the private drive?
The town was, well, actually, I have located the meter bit out there, but for some reason, the surveyor didn't pick it up on his plan. Wherever it is, we will work on it.
Okay, yeah, again, the only concern is just making sure that that doesn't get impacted by the improvements associated with your development.
Yes, we really want to avoid his water service as well as his electric service.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Last question, John. Your driveway and parking area, is that gonna be just gravel?
According to builder, initially, it has to be just gravel. In the future, we will probably pave it, but I'm not even sure that, whether it'll need to be paved. I've lived with gravel driveways before, so it's not really a problem to me.
Okay, well, it's not marked either way, so, okay, just that's the reason the question was asked. All right, anybody else on the board have any questions, concerns? Is there anybody other than Mr. Young out there would like to address the board on this application? Bruce, you have anything else to add? Bruce Young?
I can see you, Chuck.
There we go.
Yeah, there we go.
All right. What about exterior lighting? We enjoy it up here very much because it is very dark. And anything that can, if the plan is to have a lot of exterior lighting, then I'd like to discuss that. I'm kind of mixed on that frog pond, you know, as far as the mosquito impact. I'm not sure what we're looking at for that. And shy of that, I guess I don't have any other comments.
Okay. John, can you respond?
Oh, sure. Lighting is very important to us from the aspect that we want minimum lighting. We have currently motion protector lights on our premises in Brighton, while our neighbors have dusted on pole lights and porch lights, and we do not like that either. We will have some that we will turn on as needed, and one, at least one, or probably just one, above the house number at some point, somewhere. The ones in the rear of the property and along the side of the garage, those would be motion sensor lights. And they would also be, or they would probably just be lights that I control if I need them. I have two small dogs, and I like to let them out into a little area. And I like to turn on the light when I put them out.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, all of that's understandable. We've just seen people that leave things on all the time, and that gets to be a problem.
Yeah, me, too.
And we do have a dark sky compliant regulation in our lighting. So it's to be forced down. It's not to illuminate anything beyond the horizontal area of the light. So that is a requirement as part of the building code. Okay. Anybody else have any issues?
This is Ryan Stachak. Welcome to Canandaigua. I would just like to encourage the landowners to recognize that we always encourage people to steward their land, and you have beautiful forests there. Please, if you're interested in actively managing that, we would encourage that. There is a free, landowners in New York State are offered one free visit from the stewardship forester through the DEC in the Avon office. His name is Bryce June, that they would offer you as part of our taxes, your afforded free forest management plan. And so I would hope that maybe you would take that up on that after, take them up on the offer, and then also just encourage you to steward that beautiful landscape as much as possible. Welcome to Canandaigua.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, Eric, I guess you can put up the legalese. Ah, there we go. Okay, someone want to take care of, you can do a two-for-one seeker and site plan if you want.
I'll take it there, Chuck. I'll make a motion to accept Grove Engineering, representing Sarah Beth Lansing and John Salisbury for Lisa Dolak at 4487 Middle Cheshire Road in the AR2 zoning district for a single-stage site plan approval and seeker type-two action. With, I believe there was eight conditions.
Correct, I did add one regarding the water service, so there would be a total of nine that I'm suggesting.
Can we change six? Because it should read the Canandaigua Water Shed Association, remember?
You may do that.
Yes.
Lance?
Yep. Thank you. If nobody else is seconded, I will second that, Gary.
Yeah, I'm still reading the conditions. Okay, looks good, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Congratulations, John, welcome to the town. And
Thank you very much. Will I get a copy of the condition? Because my screen is blank.
Yeah, I can probably print you off a copy right now.
Yeah, walk down the hallway. Okay, Mr. Young, thank you for showing up.
Very well, thank you.
And for your input. All righty. Okay, we move on to the minutes from our July 28th meeting. Could get a motion to approve those?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Nice job, John, by the way. And referrals to town board, what do we got as far as ordinance committee? Do we, these things look like, we've gone through those before, Eric.
Can I, just for one second, there's Pam Sharp on the line. Is this the Pam Sharp that I talked to past about subdivision and site plan approval? I'm just curious if you are under the impression that there is an application on for tonight?
I'm not sure I have a microphone.
Oh, we can hear you.
Yes, I'm just checking in to see how things work.
Okay, all right, well, thanks for joining us.
Okay.
Hope we didn't scare you off.
No, no.
You can hang around, Pam.
Yeah, I was going to, I think I missed the part about the manufactured housing.
No, you're right on cue. Eric's gonna explain that to us.
Well, let's do that one first then, if you're interested in that one. So, let's see. The ordinance committee was working on a change to town code, it's 229S, and this relates to the placement of manufactured housing within the town of Canandaigua. He was, as this email kind of talks about, he was talking, working with a guy who places manufactured homes, and essentially that person said that the regulations of the town of Canandaigua are a violation of HUD because they relate to building standards for manufactured homes, which are set by HUD, and we can't really change that. There can be, the town can place aesthetic regulations on manufactured homes, and that's kind of what this change is intended to be, to change it from a construction standard, where like, you know, how the foundation walls was extended below the frost line, to now it just relates to the type of skirting that's allowed and block foundation for aesthetic purposes. So the remainder of the rules, as far as where they can be placed, which is everywhere except the RLD, and that they be double-wide with no less than 1,100 square feet, that is proposed to remain the same.
Is this a change from what we looked at, gosh, it has to be four or five months ago?
Yeah, it was back in March, but no, this isn't a change.
Okay. And I think if the minutes reflect, we were okay with it, so. Pam, if you want to comment on what's proposed? Or are you just listening in on the discussion?
I did read this earlier when I came into the site, and my site person is very happy to see that.
Oh, okay. A satisfied customer. Good. Well, then, any action you need from the board, Eric? I think we, unless someone from the board wants to change their mind.
Any comments that you have any, if you support it, that, or no comment? Or anything to help the ordinance committee? Get a feel on how to move forward?
I think we, I think we, we probably didn't take a vote. There was a consensus that we supported it the last time we talked about it, so.
Any more to talk about previously?
Yeah, I can remember, in fact, I remember presenting it, I think, to the board. It was sometime early in the year, might have been February or March. It's when we were all together. I remember that. But that being said, if nobody else has any objections...
Why is it not allowed in the RLD? Why are they not allowed in the RLD?
Probably aesthetic purposes. I think actually, the county, I got a copy of their draft comments, and they meet tomorrow. One of their draft comments was that the town should eliminate that restriction because it might be illegal.
Sounds pretty discreet.
That's a good reason. Yeah.
Because I think we have manufactured homes on the lake in the RLD on the east side of the road. Am I right?
We do. We do. We have about three or four of them, about four coves up from me.
So I don't really, I'm just, that's one of the thoughts I had. And then why would we limit them to no less than 1,100 square feet? I thought we were moving in the direction of removing minimum sizes for homes. But those are just my two comments. I'm not gonna make us think of it just, those are the first things they recognize.
I think that that's a good suggested change, in my opinion. I think it aligns with the town of Canandaigua. I'll leave that comment in this venue up to the planning board.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with Ryan. I assume everybody else, if that's an issue that can be changed, let's ride with it. Yeah, and I think everything else was more or less done for aesthetics. And also making sure that any utilities underneath the unit not subject to the weather and with using concrete or concrete block, there's less chance of that occurring. But again, the size of living space, are you talking about reducing that number to a specific number, Ryan? Or just not mention it at all?
Yeah, I guess I really didn't prepare for this. Just we've had conversations about the trends in the future, young people wanting smaller homes. And in the town of Canandaigua, I thought that there was a single-family dwelling minimum size of 1,200 square feet nowadays. And we talked about how that doesn't seem to be appropriate, but here it is, 1,100. So I'm really not married to one way or another. I just, it seems to go against where I thought the conversations were going. It's just up for discussion.
Are you talking about the RLD and manufactured homes? I'm losing the conversation here.
I think it just relates to this section. They shall offer no less than 1,100 square feet of living space. And Ryan, for your knowledge, it's 1,100 square feet for all single-family dwellings. Double-wide single-family dwellings.
Except the residential, okay, except the residential lakes.
No, no, the RLD is still subject to the 1,100 square feet minimum for single-family dwellings. But as the code reads currently, you cannot place double-wide manufactured homes in the RLD.
Right.
Or manufactured homes in general.
And the ones that are there are on very, very small pieces of land, and there are like 25 square feet as opposed to 50, which is kind of minimum on most of those in Canandaigua, the lots. In other words, they're very old, under an old code.
Hey, folks, what do you want to do? Do you want to leave it as-is, seeing it complies with the current?
Maybe we could just encourage them to revisit it as the ordinance committee. I don't know if we're gonna get any here with it tonight, but I mean, just review that, and I'm not...
Yeah, I would say, you know, run it concurrent with consideration of the overall minimum size of buildings. And if that number drops, then this number would have to drop too, so. And hopefully, they do consider reducing that number in terms of any residential structure in the town. Okay, so I guess, Eric, you could let it be known that it was consensus of the board that we agree with the draft?
Yes.
Okay. Pam, any of any other questions? Okay. Going once, going twice? All right, let's move on to the off-street parking, where we are with that, Eric.
So I prepared a pretty extensive, like, memo that justifies the changes. Essentially, this is an old section of code, about 30 years or so. We require a ton of parking. So when Tops was built, we required four acres of parking. And they got a waiver or variance to only build 2.5 acres or so. Similarly, the developers of the Roseland Plaza over where TJ Maxx is, they got their required amount of parking cut in half. So they didn't, had to provide half as much. And you can still see how much extra parking there is in that lot. And we still require the same amount today from the amount that they were varied. So we required originally one for every 100 square feet, we still do. Anyways, we essentially require a lot of wasted parking spaces. That costs a lot of money for the developers, and for anybody willing to come in and develop a property, that's a real downside for them. It also is harmful for the environment. It creates more impervious surfaces, as everybody knows. It promotes more driving, which is negative on the environment. There's a heat sink effect. There's a lot of salt that goes onto these parking areas. It's just generally bad. So I think I, so I added in here the land cost per acre. So Tops would have had to spend $263,000 just for the area for the parking, essentially based on the current land value. So that's valuable land in the town of Canandaigua, in our uptown area, that currently is required to be parking. We can make that a higher and better use if we eliminate the need for this wasteful parking. It runs counter to the multimodal goals of the town. Essentially, it's just all around bad. And the various goals that, through our comprehensive plans, that this helps promote. The big changes of this code, changing the required size of it. Right now, it has to be 200 square feet. This makes it a little bit variable, but it's right around, I think, 8 by 18 or 9 by 18. The schedule that sets the prescriptive requirements for how much parking to be required. So again, like, for every 100 square feet of commercial space, you need one parking spot. That would be eliminated, and I'll get to what it's replaced with. So we went through the code, and in instances where there was requirements for parking spaces, a lot of times they were modified or eliminated. Changing the requirements here. So again, changing the dimensional requirements. We'll get to that one in a second. Eliminating the maximum requirement for ADA spaces. So previously, the max amount required would be 10, which in larger commercial developments, and with the growing number of old and disabled residents, it makes sense to perhaps have more. So we eliminated that maximum. Now, as you can see, the draft town code requirements are well above the ADA requirements. So we would be providing a lot more handicap parking. Let's see. I believe we are strengthening our language on off-site parking facilities. So this would allow for, say, a developer on a 332, they could provide off-site parking with an easement so that somebody else who had a parcel, I don't know, 200 feet away, 400 feet away, they could use that for their parking requirements, and then the people can walk over. It's a good way to make sure that the most valuable spaces in the town are used for value-producing uses, like commercial spaces, residential spaces, and not used for parking. I guess the big thing that we're getting to here, required off-street parking spaces. Essentially, the applicant will have to calculate that demand based on accepted standards of ITE or other acceptable standard in instances where there's a new construction in excess of 5,000 square feet, substantial renovation of a principal building of 50,000 square feet, or if the planning board requests it during the course of their review. Certain ones are exempt, add single-family, two-family dwellings. And then there is, the planning board has granted, like, land bank parking spaces in the past. This codifies that, or attempts to codify it anyways. And then further, they're allowed to, the planning board would be allowed to modify the required number of spaces, essentially if they provide other treatments to reduce the amount of car parking. So if they show that people are gonna be busing, biking, if they have a transportation management plan, they're gonna find some other way to get people to that site. And then the stall and aisle dimensions, so this would actually probably, this would be included in the site design and development criteria. So depending on the arrangement of the parking stalls, they've changed the minimum required width and the aisle width. And that's it.
It's quite an overhaul, but it's certainly a warranted change. Because I know we've talked about many times over, every time we see an application with usually a non-residential application with a lot of parking spaces, we say, boy, that's way too many spaces. And we have used the land banking effectively. And I think, as Eric said, this allows us to do that, but it also leaves a lot more discretion as to the number of spaces required. And there is some science involved that the applicant has to provide a parking generation study for certain-sized developments. Or anytime we so choose to ask him to prepare, it's very similar to a traffic study. And we would get an analysis as to how many spaces would be needed. So that being said, I think this has gone out to the board. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it to some degree. I don't know if you're ready to make a comment on it now, or if we can put together a recommendation. Where's town board on this as far as, well, I know they've got a lot of draft ordinances in the queue, I guess, right, Eric?
Yeah, they are, like you said, building up a queue of ones that have been reviewed by the ordinance committee, gotten comments from the various boards, and essentially ready for action from the town board. This would be the third or fourth in that line.
Does the board feel comfortable with moving this ahead? Or do you want to spend some more time looking at it?
I think Eric's done a great job.
I'm good. I'm good with that.
Gary, Ryan?
Yeah, I'll be honest, I haven't had a chance to really study it and look at it. But from what Eric said tonight, and I, you know, I trust, I think the ordinance committee has done a great job in the past in moving in the right direction. So I don't anticipate I'd have any problems, but I just, I guess I reserve the right. I'm gonna try to find some time to look at it, and if I have any comments, I can send them directly to Eric.
Yeah, I think this is great, Eric. I mean, I'm with Gary. Everything you said was great. I didn't really process it or internalize it, but I know that you're kind of like a good advocate for reasonable parking, and this seems to fit the, you know, if this can help us out. I mean, those are big numbers. That Tops Plaza, that's stuff, that kind of killed that project. There's still a buildable lot there, I think. And, you know, I wonder if we could revive that, and something like this might encourage some development on that corner spot. But yeah, good job. I support this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eric, you did a good job, as I said, as has been said, and I think it's time to move it on. And I think the consensus of the board is an endorsement of the draft as presented.
Yeah, I like all the research and data behind the kinds of things that you send us. And that helps a lot in making a decision.
Yep.
You did great.
Okay, well done. So, yeah, if you would let the board know through a recommendation that we endorse it, certainly as-is, we appreciate that. Moving through the agenda, recommendations, ZBA, nothing there, code enforcement, nothing there. We have no letters of credit or bond releases. Eric, Lance, we good?
Yep.
Okay. Let's move on to the NRI draft. That was something that was circulated by Sarah. And it sort of puts everything together, all the resources that we have in the town in one big package, which is certainly much easier to refer to and makes things easier in terms of our reviews, looking at the environmental effects of a project. Do you have any details that you'd like to explain, Eric, on the NRI draft?
You know, we have, we have an NRI right now. I think that the ECB and probably the planning board is familiar with kind of how it functions. It's a tool for the planning board, for the ECB zoning board, to see what environmental resources are potentially impacted by a project. So on that end, it updates what we have. It adds a number of resources. And it will continue to function as a good resource for the planning board moving forward. A lot of these, like, maps, GIS files, will be shared with the county to make it easier to incorporate, like, encore into reviews. And then it also should be in this one, but... There was a, oh. There's some native trees. There are some different tools at the very end that we can use. And I think there's a checklist somewhere for questions like that you might ask during review.
Have you sent that to us?
It was, it was on the board site.
Okay. I didn't see all the attachments. It's really amazing.
It's intriguing, right? Reading, no doubt about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to look again.
I may have gotten it because I was involved with CIC. I was thinking it was sent out to everybody. There's the checklist.
Yeah.
So Eric, in two or three sentences or less, the update involves what from the original NRI?
Original NRI, as I recall, just had wetlands. It only had like three resources essentially. Wetlands are one of them, steep soaps, I think was another one. Can't remember what the third one was.
Floodplains, I think, or wetland, yeah. Yeah, it was, it was very, very light.
Wetlands, floodplains, streams and steep slopes.
So now it's much more inclusive, yeah.
Yep.
Would the, well, I would stress to the board members, if you haven't done so, go on the website or FTP site and pull it up. And again, it is very interesting reading. Okay, how about a update on the comp plan? I know you reconvened last week.
So after a long hiatus, it's directed to finish up. So we met last week. We had a pretty good meeting, kind of our regular cast of characters from the project team, with the exception of Ryan, who was unfortunately unable to make it. But we were able to go through the remaining goals that we had. Again, there's 11 goals. We went through the last five at the last meet, at the meeting last week. Set up some measurables and some action items. So the next step is to probably circulate the goals, vision, and compiled action items and measurables and just see if anybody has some last remaining ones that they wanted to add. Chuck, I know you sent that one earlier today, which we can probably find a way to fit in the ag one. And then we're going to try to essentially make a plan. This is kind of the draft that we have, or that I've been working on so far. Just filling it out, all this good stuff. So anyways, putting it together. And once this draft is finally prepared, we will get comments on that as well.
When do you think you're going to send that to us?
I'm hoping to have it done by the end of the month.
Okay, great.
For this draft, but it's pretty long.
Yeah.
The existing conditions is somewhere around 80 pages or so. So it'll take a while to convert it.
Sure.
Chris Nadler said a good comprehensive plan should be no larger than 20 pages, Eric.
A comprehensive plan, no more than 20 pages?
That's what Chris Nadler says, yes.
Well, the executive summary will be less than 20 pages. How about that?
That's good. That's fair enough. That's fair enough.
The synopsis.
So anyways, that's where we're at. Hopefully, you know, there's still quite a bit of work left, a lot of referrals, public meetings, all that good stuff before it's all said and done. But we're coming towards the end.
Yeah, and you know what? Karen, I can work with Eric to kind of put together a brief summary for the board. You know, part of New York State law is that we have to have a presence on the comprehensive plan update. And I think that I'm serving in that role. So I missed the meeting last week because I had, I've been working late. And so I just, my schedules are overlapping because I only go to work on Tuesdays and Thursdays right now. So it's, in fact, I'm still at work right now. So I'll try to put together, you know, some type of a comprehensive review for that for everybody to kind of have input in.
Okay, and Eric, you know, kudos to you. I mean, really, this was all your, your effort. There was no consultant involved, right?
Nope.
So, I mean, the town, you saved the town quite a bit of money. And I, what I've seen of the product so far, it certainly did a great job, so.
Crushing it. Eric is crushing it.
Thanks, thanks. Thank you very much. All right, we look forward to that draft. If you could get it out to us, we can then discuss it at one of our meetings in September. Okay, I'm just sort of catching some loose ends here. Eric, Michelle sent out a copy of that resolution 2020-154, having to do with the COVID extension on time for, after approvals. Do we have to take any action on it? I guess that, that note has to be put on plans. Do you want to explain what it does?
Sure. Earlier this year, the New York State Legislature and signed by the governor passed a law that would extend or would allow the locality to extend approvals from the various boards. So the town board went ahead and essentially extended them all. Variances, site plans, specialty permits, all that good stuff for 180 days. So you guys don't really have to do anything. The town board already did it. As they said in the resolution, there's a number of notes and notifications that had to be made. But obviously none of that, than you guys.
So on our resolutions for an approval, I think usually Lance, on your first note, you have 180 days to comply with the conditions and submit a record plan?
Revised plan.
A revised plan, yeah, with the conditions met. And so that's in compliance with what's being requested here. I mean, that's in compliance with the resolution adopted by the board.
Right.
Okay. Do we have to put anything on the plan itself, a stamp or anything to that effect? Did I read something in the resolution about it has to be marked in the plan?
That is good for, no, I don't, I don't believe so, Chuck. I think state law allows us to grant waivers if it's not signed by a certain period of time in the amount of 90 days, which is what this board has been, been doing over the last couple of years that I've been involved. So I think we're fully compliant as we've been doing it.
Okay, I just read it once. Let me reread it and go from there. All right, training. I know some of us got some training in the last month. Eric, could we ask Michelle to do a spreadsheet of our training hours, where we stand? I know she, somebody does it for the ECB.
Yeah, Michelle.
If Michelle could do that for us and we could see where we're doing. How you make it out, Amanda?
Unmuted. Give me a couple of days. I have a couple of days coming up right now, so.
Okay. Let, let us know if you have any issue, any problems and we'll take care of them. Other training, I think Eric, you had sent something out, or John, I guess John Robitella sent some training out about Seneca Lake and Cuca Lake Watershed Association having some meetings, but I don't know if they totally applied to us because I think they were specific to those two lakes. Again, there's, there's opportunities out there, so please research them and make sure we get the required amount of hours in. All right, our next meeting is the 25th of August. We will continue to do it online. And as part of that meeting, you see what's on the agenda. I guess one item that will be added will be Rocco's Brickyard Thomas Road Airport Road Conceptual Plan. He is, he'd like to come before the board. I know we talked about getting together to sort of noodle over a plan that he's, that he has in mind. And it would be a good time to sit down with him and sort of give him some guidance as to the way we'd like to see the area developed and ask any questions as to how it can be developed. And apparently, Eric, you said that he has a concept that is somewhat etched in mud? Not in stone. He has a concept that he'd like to run out. So we'll, we'll get that plan out too as part of the mailing for the next meeting. Or it'll be on the FTP site, I guess. All righty, anything else for the, for the board?
One more thing that happened, I guess, was it earlier this, or last week or earlier this week? I guess the, Doug Finch copied us on a response that, to something about Anetia's property and some appeared that there's a bunch of, there's drainage issues or something. What's behind that? Is that, there's something we got to be concerned about there?
He said something was silly or ridiculous or something.
Yeah.
Fox Ridge, yeah.
Right. That's what it was.
Lance, are you familiar with this?
Yeah, so the email that was sent out to me appeared to be after a rain event. And it looked as if, and from my dialogue that I've had with town staff, that erosion control elements were not in place and they did disturb the ground out there. And what happens when it rains and this ground's disturbed and you don't have erosion control, it runs down the roadway and enters, our drainage swales, et cetera. And that's what essentially occurred. So I think, I think Doug was one, and I don't know for certain, so this is just my assumption. I think Doug was informing us of the mishaps that took place out there. And was just trying to identify some of the concerns that maybe we should have going forward about procedural stuff as relates to erosion control, as we typically do in our reviews and with the board's concerns. So I just think he was trying to point it to our attention. For the record, John, Lance or Eric, was there any financial or any citations issued for any of that situation?
I'm not sure. There may have been a violation notice sent out, but generally if the issue's corrected within a certain period of time, it's not taken further. But I would have to check with Chris Jensen.
Yeah, I think his email was sort of like a stop work, wasn't it?
Yes, that's usually how it goes out. It's a violation, stop work order, can't do anything until it's corrected.
Until it's cleaned up, yeah.
You're right, and that's, that's similar to how DEC operates. They issue a letter of violation and then they give you a certain period of time to make the corrective actions out there. So there's no real incentive to make sure you do it right in the first place because when the rain goes, I mean, we've seen this for 10 years. This is how it is and there's, you know, we can talk about it a lot, but the incentive may be to not put those measures in place and gamble. I mean, this happened a lot on the Morale property on Middle Cheshire Road. There was an intense, that's all phosphorus going right into the lake. And so just, just bringing that to the attention, like until there's some type of action that really, everybody takes it seriously, you know. I mean, tonight we have Suzie and on Parrish Street Extension, they're actively putting a rain garden in for a small parking lot, just to reduce the amount of water. Taking proactive steps and, you know, it's just, there's, there's, I don't, I'm not saying that I advocate for financial, but there's, there's, there's no real penalty for that type of action. And you nailed it, Eric. That's what the DEC does too. So we can talk about it all we want, but when the rubber hits the road or the rain hits the ground, what happens?
Is that, was that a, I mean, that should have been called out in the construction sequence on the drawings, that they have to have those, those mitigation factors, you know, in place before they move to the next step. And I wonder if there's something we can do there to say, you know, like, if you're building a house, you know, you can't put the, you can't put the second, the first floor on until somebody comes out and inspects the foundation to make sure that that's done right. Well, is there some inspection process that, that, you know, you can't proceed to the next level until your stormwater maintenance plan or something at least is reviewed and approved or something to move forward? I'm not sure if it's that detailed or what, but.
Yeah. Typically, the sequence is fairly detailed. I mean, we get more detailed on these sized projects where they're that large. And you're right, they, the first step, and Eric, you're going to have to correct me where I'm wrong. Typically, the issue will permit to allow them to put the stabilized construction entrance in and then some perimeter erosion control elements in before they do site grading. Now, I don't know if that's always the case or if it's only on certain residential, individual residential lots that occurs on first, but I know procedurally the town has been enforcing that, that type of procedure in compliance with the plans. I would say that this project was not compliant with their plans and, and providing erosion and sediment control measures and just disturbed the ground and didn't protect it. Now, Ryan, I can't confirm that it did or did not get to the lake, but there is drainage inlet's there and all that runoff, runoff is going to the existing stormwater facility on site. Now, they didn't see pictures of the stormwater facility, but I guess it's possible that it entered the facility and then maybe overflowed that, depending upon the quantity of rain that we got. But at least that site, it's supposed to be going to the, to the pond before it enters and discharges out. Thank you for clarifying that, Lance. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? If not, we'll see everybody on the 25th, if not before. And have a good evening and cue Ryan.
Motion to approve, or to approve this, to adjourn this meeting at 7:55 PM.
Second.
All right, great. I kept that under two, I kept that under two hours, guys. All righty.
Help for you. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Have a good one. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, John.
Here.
Hey, Eric?
Yep.
Are you in tomorrow? I got to call you on something.
Yeah, I should be.
Okay, I'll give you a short call. Need your little advice.
Okay, yeah.
Bye.
Take care.